Good evening, everyone. It's six o'clock and it's time to call to order this March 19th, 2019 meeting of the Gallatin City Council. We'll begin this meeting like we do each meeting with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. And this evening Chief Victor Williams is going to offer our invocation and the pledge is going to be led by Councilman Fan. If you would stand with me, please.
Shall we pray? Our loving Father, we're so thankful and so grateful for another opportunity to come together to do the business of this great city. We ask, Lord, that you would fill this place with your presence. We ask that you would grant unto us wisdom and understanding. And we pray, Lord, that when all things have been said and done, that they would have been done and they would have been pleasing in your sight. Is our prayer in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief Williams. Thank you, Councilman Fan. And now Ms. Kitchell will call the roll for us. Please.
Vice Mayor Camp. Mr. Alexander.
Present.
Mr. Fan.
Present.
Mr. Fennell.
Here.
Mr. Hayes. Ms. Love. Mr. Overton.
Present.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you so much. Before you tonight, you have the minutes from the February 5th, 2019 council meeting and the February 19th council meeting. Have a motion to approve by Councilman Alexander, second by Councilman Hayes. Are there any corrections?
None from me.
None from Ms. Love. What about everyone else? All right. With no one seeking any corrections, all in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. The minutes for February 5th and February 19th are approved. Now we're at the time of the meeting for public recognition on agenda-related items. If there's an item on this evening's agenda that you have a concern about, now is your time to come forward and address it. We ask that you give us your name and share your address with us and then you may speak for five minutes. So, public recognition on agenda-related items is now open.
I think you all know who I am now. My name is Elaine Donahue. I live at 518 Colles Ferry Road. And I am coming to speak to you about the possible purchase of the property on Colles Ferry, at 416 Colles Ferry. I've come to say that I am not in disagreement with it. I agree with the city purchasing this. I do have some questions that I would like for you all to consider. And that is, in the future, I know you're talking about a conservation easement with broad ramifications. I've heard that there might be a park there, a training facility and a home, which sounds good. I know at one time, it was supposed to be a venue. That was Charles' request. He told Dylan I that himself. And so that's something you all might consider too, because it would make a beautiful venue. But I do have concerns at the fact that it is zoned residential. And could you all come back later and develop it? That would be an issue that I think would be a concern to all of us, because we spent a year fighting the development. We got it down from about 270 houses down to 140. I do understand there's still going to be a few houses built on the road, and I don't have a problem with that. I hope they are built consistently and look similar to what we own. I would hope that. But nine is a whole lot better than what you all started out with. So those are the questions I have, that maybe you all would want to consider what could be done with it in the future. And do we have a concern about that? And thank you very much. I think you're going to make a wise decision.
Thank you.
Linda Sutter, I live at 709 Colles Ferry Road. Basically, just repeating what I've said before, that aye, and many of the neighbors are in support of the green space being purchased on Colles Ferry Road. Gallatin's grown. It's not going to shrink. Green space is not going to be readily available. So just to voice our support. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak under public recognition? Seeing no one, I'll declare public recognition on agenda-related items closed. That brings us now to Mayor's comments. I do have just a couple of things of note to share. I do want you all to know that Jeff Henshaw's birthday is this week. It's the 21st. This Thursday night also is the Gallatin Police Department's annual awards ceremony. The government relations meeting that happens throughout the spring is happening again this Friday. It's at 7:30 on Friday morning at Sumner Regional Medical Center, sponsored by The Chamber. And also on this Friday night, the Gallatin Fire Department is having their graduation swearing-in ceremony for many new firefighters. And this Saturday, Councilwoman Love, Vice Mayor Camp, both are celebrating birthdays. And we missed Councilman Fan's birthday on the 11th. Spring break is next week, for those of you who may not know that. Traffic should be better around Gallatin. And I think that is it until we meet again, that you need to know about. Also want to say a big thank you to all who participated and helped make the Shamrock Run happen. It was miserable weather, but they still had a great turnout to raise money for our Sumner County Schools. Also wanted you to be aware, and several of you were there that night, that the Shalom Zone this year did recognize the city of Gallatin with the Hal Hooper Philanthropic Award. And so we accepted that on that night. And also, since we met last, the First Baptist Church in Gallatin celebrated their 160th anniversary. So I think that is it, and now we can move to the regular agenda. I do want to tell you that item number 22 can be removed from the agenda, because Event Bright did agree to meet our terms on the Don attorney asked for. So we're clear on that one. We don't have to consider that again. So now we'll come to the regular agenda, and the first item on the regular agenda is second reading on ordinance 01902-4, and Councilman Hayes is recognized for that.
Yeah, this is an ordinance of the city of Gallatin, Tennessee, rezoning two lots totaling 6.98 acres from the G.O. General Office District to the M.U. Mixed Use District, with a preliminary master development plan for Avondale Farms located south of Nashville Pike and east of Schutz Lane. Motion to approve.
There's a motion by Councilman Hayes, a second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion? Seeing no one indicating that they wish to discuss, we will vote on second reading on ordinance 01902-4. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, say no. It does pass unanimously. Item number two is second reading on amended ordinance 01902-6, and for that, Councilman Overton.
Thank you, Mayor. This order, city of Gallatin, Sumner County, Tennessee, approving a preliminary master development plan for the shops at Payne on 1.722 acres, located at southwest corner of the intersection Nashville Pike and Davis Drive, authorizing revision to be indicated on official zoning atlas, including conflict of ordinance, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. And I so move.
Motion by Councilman Overton, second by Councilman Fennell. Is there any discussion on this?
Now, we did put the amendment in there about the brick wall, correct?
That's the amended part.
Yep. That's, I think that's what a lot of people are here for. So it's in there to look just like the brick one behind Buffalo Wild Wings.
Yeah, okay.
Anything else? Okay, this is second reading on amended ordinance 01902-6. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Does pass unanimously. Item three is second reading on ordinance 01903-7, Councilman Fennell.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance appropriating $604.17 for revenue received from insurance for damage to the Pierce fire engine. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Fennell, second by Councilman Hayes. Is there any discussion? This is second reading on ordinance 01903-7. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. It does pass unanimously. Item four is second reading on ordinance 01903-8, Councilman Fan. Try and get your vote on it.
Ordinance appropriating $6,193.32 from revenue received from insurance for damage to the fireboat. I so move.
Motion by Councilman Fan, second by Councilman Alexander. Any discussion? This is second reading on ordinance 01903-8. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. It does pass unanimously. Item five is second reading on ordinance 01903-9, Vice Mayor Camp.
Thank you, Mayor. This order is appropriating $79,229.92 back to the fire department salaries and benefits. So move.
Motion by Vice Mayor Camp, second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion? This is second reading on ordinance 01903-9. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, please say no. Does pass unanimously. Item number six is second reading on ordinance 01903-10, Councilman Hayes.
Yes, an ordinance appropriating funds in amount of $100,000 for furniture and equipment for fire station number five. Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Hayes, second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, this is second reading on ordinance 01903-10. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Passes unanimously. Item seven is first reading on ordinance 01903-11, Councilman Alexander.
Thank you, Mayor. This is appropriating insurance recovering the amount of $3,154 from the unassigned fund balance of the general fund for repair of damaged vehicle, maintenance garage door, and I so move.
Motion by Councilman Alexander, second by Councilman Fan. Is there any discussion? This is first reading on ordinance 01903-11. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Does pass unanimously. Item number eight is first reading on ordinance 01903-12, Councilwoman Love.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance awarding bid and authorizing funds in the total amount of $2,236,520 from gas system revenue, bond sales, Series 2019, for 2019 annual gas line construction in various areas of the city. I so move.
Motion by Councilwoman Love, second by Councilman Overton. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, this is first reading on ordinance 01903-12. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. It does pass unanimously. Item number nine is first reading on ordinance 01903-13, Councilman Hayes.
Yes, an ordinance appropriating $500 from revenue received from Sumner County Juvenile Court Collection for damage to soccer fields at Rogers Field on Station Camp. Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Hayes, second by Councilwoman Love. Is there any discussion? This is first reading on ordinance 01903-13. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. Does pass unanimously. Item number 10 is first reading on ordinance 01903-14, Councilman Overton.
Thank you, Mayor. This order is appropriating $1,223.59 for revenue received from assigned shop, a sale of signed materials, and I so move.
Motion by Councilman Overton, second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion? This is first reading on ordinance 01903-14. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Does pass unanimously. Item 11 is first reading on ordinance 01903-15, Councilman Fennell.
Yes, this is an ordinance appropriating $50,000 for the 2019 recycling equipment grant. This is the purchase of a used roll-off truck. Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Fennell, second by Councilwoman Love. Any discussion? This is first reading on ordinance 01903-15. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. It's passed unanimously. Item 12 is first reading on ordinance 01903-16, Councilman Fan.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance appropriating $5,000 in partnership with decoration Miracle Field donations to marketing and public relations. I so move.
Motion by Councilman Fan, second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion? This is first reading on ordinance 01903-16. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. It does pass unanimously. Item 13 is first reading on ordinance 01903-17, and Councilwoman Love is recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance of the city of Gallatin approving an amendment to the Gallatin zoning ordinance, Article 2, Section 2.02. Definitions, Article 3. Use clarification, Section 3.02, listing of activity classification, Section 03.05. Residential activities, class and type, Section 03.07. Commercial activities, class and type, Section 03.08. Manufacturing activities, class and types, Article 8. Provisions for commercial districts, Section 8.01. Intent and purpose of the C.C. Core Commercial District, Section 08.03. Intent and purpose of C.G. Commercial General District in Article 9. Provisions for industrial districts, Section 9.01. General purposes and intent of industrial districts, Section 9.02. Intent and purposes of the I.R. Industrial Restrictive District in Section 9.03. Intent and purposes of the I.G. Industrial General District to modify the permitted uses, permitted uses with conditions, conditional uses and prohibited uses, and amending Article 15 Administration and Enforcement, Section 15.06. Conditional use permits, authorizing the revisions to be made on the zoning ordinance, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. I so move.
Motion by Councilwoman Love, second by Councilman Hayes. Would you like to summarize that? I'm just kidding. Any discussion on this? Okay, this is first reading on ordinance 01903-17. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Passes unanimously. Item number 14 is first reading on ordinance 01903-19, Councilman Overton.
Thank you, Mayor. This order is authorized to negotiate the purchase of three properties, which are 551 East Main Street, 1062 Sugar Tree Lane, 416 Colles Ferry Road, any amount up to 2.2 million, and I so move.
Okay, there's a motion by Councilman Overton, a second by Councilwoman Love. That 2.2 million is not included, so his motion includes it. And so we will put that there and open the floor for discussion. I will address the one question that was asked, which was about could housing come in there and be built? And basically, I mean, I think you all understand, but basically, a conservation easement is going to keep that from being able to happen, and that's the property owner's desire in selling it. I mean, she's going to let us set our parameters, but she doesn't want any commercial development, industrial development, or residential developments in there. There could be, you know, as we discussed, and we haven't set these parameters yet, there could be in the future, say, if we wanted to sell it to somebody and it had that conservation easement, we could include in there the allowance where two more homes could be built on the property, if we choose to. I'm not going to recommend that we do that. But I mean, that's an example. That's not saying, you know, that's, we can draw those parameters how we wish, but the seller is not going to allow for any kind of commercial, industrial, residential developments. But if somebody wanted it as a farm and they wanted to build a home, or a child's home, or a mother-in-law's home, or something like that, that might make sense. So that would be the limitation on that, in my mind.
Have you started negotiating yet?
I have spoken with all the property owners whose prices are firm, as they acknowledge. We had appraisals done, and, you know, different margins in the appraisals. You guys may or may not know, the $25,000 price on the Langley Hall property per acre, you know, she's asking 35,000 acre for the development, for development, right? And so I think that's a substantial reduction. And say she were to go ahead and develop it, or someone else were to go ahead and develop it, then they're looking at selling it for 70,000 acre. I mean, 70,000 a lot, or, I mean, 60, 70,000 dollars a lot, whatever the going rates are right now. On the Station Camp property, their initial offering was 600,000, but they said they'd do 500. And then on the Main Street property, his initial offering was 400,000. And then when the appraisal came in, and it was 359, I believe, he said he would take 340. So that's where we are on those. Any questions? Any discussions? Okay, we will vote. This is first reading on ordinance 01903-19, and Ms. Kitchell, because it was divided last time, I'm going to ask for a voice. Voice vote, please. Vice Mayor Camp. Mr. Alexander. Pardon me, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Fan.
I have to abstain. I'm in partnership with one of the property owners.
Mr. Fennell.
Yes.
Mr. Hayes.
No.
Ms. Love.
Yes.
Mr. Overton.
Yes.
Four yeses, two nos, and one abstention, Mayor.
Thank you. So, ordinance 01903-19 passes first reading. Move to item number 15, which is Resolution R1903-13, Councilman Hayes.
This is a resolution accepting public improvements by the city of Gallatin, Tennessee, Green Farms, Phase 1, Section 3. Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Hayes, second by Councilman Fan. Is there any discussion? This is Resolution R1903-13. All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Opposed, please say no. It does pass unanimously. Item 16 is Resolution R1903-14, and Councilman Hayes, hear it again.
This is a resolution accepting public improvements by the city of Gallatin for Green Farms, Phase 1, Section 2. Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Hayes, second by Councilman Fennell. Any discussion? Oh, who'd I say? I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. So, a motion by Mr. Hayes, second by Mr. Fan. No discussion indicated? So all in favor of Resolution R1903-14, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. Does pass unanimously. Item 17 is Resolution R1903-15, Councilman Hayes.
Resolution accepting public improvements by the city of Gallatin for Green Farms, Phase 1, Section 1. Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Hayes, second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion? This is Resolution R1903-15. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, say no. It does pass unanimously. Item 18, Resolution R1903-16, Councilman Hayes.
This is a resolution accepting public improvements by the city of Gallatin for Foxland, Phase 3, Section 1A. Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Hayes, second by Councilman Overton. Is there any discussion? This is Resolution R1903-16. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. It does pass unanimously. Item 19 is Resolution R1903-17, Councilman Alexander.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution appointing Lynn Assati to the Gallatin Health Educational and Housing Facility Board, and I so move. I hope I pronounced his last name wrong.
It's actually Assanti.
Assanti.
And he's a friend of mine, that's why I know. Because this is a weird name.
I about read that one, Assati.
Okay, motion by Councilman Alexander, second by Councilwoman Love. Is there any discussion? This is Resolution R1903-17. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Does pass unanimously. Item 20 is Resolution R1903-18, and Vice Mayor Camp.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution appointing Lynn Assati to the Gallatin Industrial Development Board. So move.
Motion by Vice Mayor Camp, second by Councilman Overton. Is there any discussion? This is Resolution R1903-18. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. It does pass unanimously. And item 21, Resolution R1903-19, Councilman Hayes.
Yeah, this is a resolution accepting Gallatin Public Works to install Rotary Park sign on Blue Jay Way. Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Hayes, second by Councilwoman Love. Any discussion?
Where's that sign going to go?
I think there's actually two, and I think...
One by Gallatin Road?
Is there one on Gallatin Road?
Yes.
Is it two signs?
My question is, I see people there all the time and the gates close. I presume if you go down the road by the driver's license plate, there's another entrance.
That's the entrance people are supposed to use. And so we're installing a directional Rotary Park sign at the end of Blue Jay Way, and we're providing the posts, signposts and the labor. All in favor of Resolution R1903-19, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. It does pass unanimously. And that concludes our agenda, 21 items in record time, and brings us now to other business. Does anyone on this council, Councilman Overton, recognize?
Mayor, if I could get Mr. Tuttle to be sure on our next work session that we put that little street I've talked to you about on 031. You know the one I'm talking about? Will you please put that on our work session? Thank you.
Mr. Fennell?
Since we talked about parks, and I pass there every day, and I see the Rotary Club Park used a lot, well, what about the park that we used to have a skiing competition? Is that Cotton Oak Caldwell or some?
Nat Caldwell?
Are we ever going to, that's our park, right?
No, it belongs to the Corps of Engineers.
Corps of Engineers. Well, whose responsibility is it about getting all the driftwood and trying to make that place look better?
We've been working on it for years, and we had a meeting about it today, actually.
Oh, really?
Yeah. The Corps, to kind of get, I went in the last meeting that some of our staff met with the Corps, but the Corps of Engineers started out saying that that was ecological habitat or natural habitat, and that we couldn't touch it. And then they came around and said, oh, well, yes, you can, because we think, you know, this valley was flooded and it probably caused the stream to back up, and we think that there's a future in getting this dredged and cleaned up. Well, now they're back to saying that they think it's a nature preserve or, what's the right term, Rosemary?
Habitat.
It's natural habitat. And we can't dredge it, but we are working right now on kind of a, we can call it a master plan, but kind of a rendering of what we think that whole area could look like, with Nat Caldwell, Station Camp, including Foxland, some corporate sites in the area, even taking it so far as up to Rogers Group, where we're talking about putting in Greenways. And so we're trying to give the Corps an idea of what the whole area looks like, the amount of homes in that area, the amount of investment in that area, so that they can understand why this is such an important area of Gallatin, and we want to get something done about it.
You know, I remember in the day, sitting on the side of the Gallatin Road, watching, doing skiing competitions right there. And I think that's a huge asset to our city, as far as the gateway to our city to have it.
We do too.
Yeah. I hope we can do some.
We have to convince the Corps, and we're working on it. Anyone else? I do have a few. David Gregory, did you want to share any news about the bond? The bond? I thought you might like to share.
Yeah, I'd like to announce that we were rated AA- on our bonds.
Which is a big deal. It's a really big deal for a gas bond. It's awesome.
Our bond sale, they had to rate their gas, our gas department. So we're rated for the bond sale a AA-, which is very good. In the natural gas industry, they don't give a lot of those out. So we're happy.
That's a big compliment to, actually, I was on that call, and Mr. Gregory did a great job. It's certainly a compliment to that department and to our city, so. And Rachel and Michelle and Finance, so.
First time I had to have water while I was talking. About two and a half hours.
It was. We thought it was going to be an hour phone call, and the guy just kept asking a lot. The same question, a lot.
We've, the whole city has done good with our gas system, you know, all of y'all has helped with it and everything else, so we appreciate it.
You want to take them all out to eat or anything?
Sure. Thank you. Buy the bonds now.
Another item of other business I have is Susan has drafted a letter to send to the red light camera people. And I know you voted on it last week, but it wasn't a voting session, so we think it would be best form for you to vote on that again, to go ahead and send this letter. You're welcome to, you know, take a minute and read it if you had. You're welcome to, you know, take a minute and read it if you hadn't had a chance to before the meeting. And we will probably, um, get it sent to them. A motion and a second. Motion by Councilman Alexander.
Sure.
Second by Councilman Overton. Is there any discussion, questions?
And we're voting whether or not to kill it or keep it active?
No, we're voting to try and get out of the contract, which would then kill it. So, and I, and I, and somebody, Susan asked me what kind of feedback I've gotten. I've gotten feedback on both sides, I really have. Um, we did do a poll online. I don't know how many respondents we ultimately had. It was way up there. It was over eight hundred, and it was about ninety, ten. Ninety for getting rid of them, and ten for keeping them. Um, lots of, you know...
I think mainly they get the tickets when they, uh, turn in the right on red. You know, they're kind of doing like a roll.
Yeah. Now, that one's not allowed. That one's not allowed anymore.
I, I understand, I know.
When I learned, got to do that.
I did get, um, Chief Andy provided us with a report on the number of colle- not collections, but unpaid notices that were sent out. And, um, the numbers have ag- they surprised me, because they're actually pretty stable. Somewhere around fifteen hundred a year was pretty much where they've been. But they're also issuing fewer each year. And so I think that trend to people not pay them continues.
The revenue that was generated off of it, if I seen it right on Channel Five News, said it was a hundred and ninety-four thousand?
That, that was the past year. We won't be at that this year. So... So that's a loss in revenue.
Guys, as I said before, I don't care what we do. It's a safety issue, safety issue to me. It's not about the money, it's about safety issue to me, but I, I don't care what we do. It's not a battle that I want to fight, so.
I don't, I mean, I don't see that we're fighting a battle, really. I just, I think, like you said, it's a safety issue. It's helped in some crime issues, you know, over the years. Uh, I think it's done what it's supposed to do. From the insurance industry, insurance industry, yeah, it's done well. But I mean, it's, it's, the crashes have gone down. Revenue's supposed to go down, because it's like Linda said a minute ago, it made her aware of that. It makes people aware of it, so. You know, that's, that's why I said we should write it out so that, so that...
But, but we do get a black eye, Craig, and you know, you know as well as I do, that we get a black eye in the, in the public's eye.
I don't.
Over them. Or you might not, because you're in another burble, bubble than we are, I guess, but you get a black eye.
How am I in another bubble?
Look, look at social media, that's all you gotta do. I mean, look at that kind of stuff and talk to people. And talk to people on the outside, and you, you'll see, but, but, you know, it's, it's, I mean, I'm good with it.
Really, do you want to get rid of, that's what you're saying?
I don't care. No, I don't.
I know the state legislature has addressed it. There are certain legislators who keep attacking the use of them. And it is on social media. A long, 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 long thread, a couple times, probably a month. And then I have, over the, you know, course of my term as mayor, I have gotten several letters from people. And when people, they say that when one person will write a letter, they are thinking what a hundred other people are thinking.
What a lovely thing.
That, you know, they'll never come to Gallatin again, that they had this experience, and, um, and, and usually, no. Usually they'll tell me the circumstances, and, and I remember one, it was in the middle of a snowstorm, and they got a red light ticket. Well, I think if it'd been a police officer, they probably wouldn't have gotten a red light ticket, because tried, there was no one on the road, there was no way to see the lights, there was, you know...
I have, I have a question for Craig. You know, you said that it's helped with insurance and everything?
No, 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 I'm just saying from an insurance standpoint, they like to see that, because it's less crashes and stuff like that.
Right, that's what you said. So does that help our city's insurance rating?
No, 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 no.
It doesn't?
I'm talking about from insurance company standpoint.
Wow. He will.
Y'all gonna keep on till I got up here, won't you? Well, like Mr. Hayes said, I mean, that, you know, the proof's in the pudding, if you will. Uh, crashes are down. Uh, it protects folks, uh, it's helped to solve crimes. Um, you know, and, and probably, I'm gonna get killed for saying this, but don't run a red light, you don't have to worry about it, so. That's really all I have to say.
Actually, if I have a question about the crime solving, I thought it just took...
No, it's twenty-four hour recording.
It's twenty-four hour.
We've solved several crimes with it.
And it pulls...
Uh, we've actually, a lot of causations for crashes, we've been able to go back and look at those, so. I mean, that's, I mean, that's, that's what it is. I mean, it's whatever the will of the body is, but, you know, they've helped, bottom line, and I understand, you know, if, if y'all have to look at a different factor, but, you know, it is what it is. It, it helps folks, and that's just how I feel about it, so.
And we've had, from, from my agency standpoint, we had one solved back six, seven years ago with a trailer stolen.
Found that guy.
Another one was, we had an at-fault crash that it was a, no, no witness, but two people could help solve that crash, so.
It did.
That's two things right there.
They have a lot of benefits, and, and, you know, at the end of the day, uh, I mean, I've heard both arguments about rear-end accidents and things like that, but, I mean, you know, if you're not following too closely, you're paying attention, you know, and, I mean, it's not a perfect world, and, and a lot of folks have gotten tickets, but, uh, you know, at the end of the day, just stop at the stoplight, don't try to speed through.
Councilwoman Love?
I've forgotten when it expires, that contract expires anyway.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three, so that's about four more years. I mean, personally, I don't, it doesn't bother me either way, but maybe, I mean, I don't see any really problem in just keeping it for, until it expires naturally.
I would like to get out of it early. I think people have learned their lesson. So, you know, don't put on another burden on people because, uh, that, that's just my personal opinion. I hadn't had to pay the ticket, so.
Okay, I'm gonna ask this council to vote on it at this time. He said he had...
We're getting ready to vote, uh, we're getting ready to vote.
Unless you want to discuss it further.
No, I'm, I'm finished discussing.
You all ready to vote?
I'm ready to vote.
All in favor, please say aye.
Oh, what are we voting?
You're voting to send, you're voting to send this letter seeking relief from our contract to ATS.
Yeah, send it on.
All in favor, please say aye. Okay, John D., it's only one button in favor. Okay, so I only have two in favor this week. Well, I can say I tried. All right, I have one more item, and this is tomorrow, the Sunder County Anti-Drug Coalition for Kick Butts Day. Um, they're going, they, they've told me that, or they've asked me, they're going to be drawing some stick figures, or some, something on the sidewalk with some data about smoking. Um, I told them I thought, I, I mean, I'm fine with that. Do any of y'all see any issue with that? They're chalk figures on the sidewalk to curb, um, smoking.
What, what sidewalk?
Around town, around Gallatin.
And like outlines of dead bodies?
No, it's supposed to be like, it's supposed to be like stick figures, represent, probably representing the deaths, but...
Is it chalk or paint?
Chalk, chalk.
So when they range or something, it'll come out locally.
And they're drawing it themselves, so it's not like it's a...
I'm just saying to overdo it, Mayor, I don't want them to overdo it. Somebody needs to watch them and not let them overdo it.
They won't, they won't. I'll talk to Kit in the morning and let her know. Don't overdo it. I think that is all that I have. Anybody else have any other business? Council, is there anything else I was supposed to bring forth? I mean, not council, but department heads, anything else I was supposed to bring forth that I failed to?
Hey, Mayor, you wanna give everybody an update on what the county commission done last night as far as that parking garage goes?
I can, I can, since Councilman Overton, Councilman Fennell, and myself, since we spent quite a bit of quality time there last evening. The Sunder County Commission last night did vote to swap property with the First Baptist Church, and to pay them an additional eight sixty-five, I think, to acquire that property between the Baptist Church, where the sanctuary is, and the library. So that includes that building where they have their youth center, and so the county's gonna purchase that, and then the church will get the property where the juvenile justice center is in that parcel. And that's for the future per- a future erection of a, a criminal justice center.
And just, just so everybody knows, we've been talk- talking about a parking garage for a long time. Mayor, Mayor and Sean Fennell is in discussions with them about us participating with the parking garage, so, I mean, that needs to be known, because it's out there, and they all discussed it last night. That was one of the biggest discussions, is what are we gonna do to help with the parking garage? So, and we've been talking about it for a long time, but we waited on this development to happen before. So...
They want us to partner with them on the parking garage, which they're planning to build the parking garage, is behind the buildings that face Main Street and Water.
And nobody's committed anything, but I'm just letting you know that that negotiation's going on, but, but they're a committee, so.
I was gonna go on and say, so that's where they're wanting to put their parking garage. The problem that I'm anticipating, and the reason that I've been, you know, talking about potentially building one in our parking lot, is because when they begin construction on that juvenile ju- or on that justice center, criminal justi- what are they calling it? Criminal Justice Center? Or just, Justice Center, yeah, because it's not all criminally right. Um, when they begin that construction, the city of Gallatin, in effect, loses three hundred parking spots. Hundred and seventy-one that belong to the church, and almost another, you know, hundred and thirty or so that belong, less, a little less than a hundred and thirty that belong to the county. So that's a lot of parking that's gonna be displaced, and, um, we don't want to hurt our downtown in this process, so.
I think that's the major piece to putting this puzzle together, is making sure we don't harm our businesses in the downtown area, and that when they enter this construction site, they enter it from the rear. But my perspective on it is, I'd like to see the county build a parking garage first, where we wouldn't displace our customers and our workers and then whatnot. But the county is trying to say that, uh, the spot where the parking garage needs to go, where they want to put it, that they need that for a laydown area, where their crane, the crane's gonna be there, say, in three or four years, their supplies. And, um, you know, that's, that's gonna be some hard decisions. It's gonna have to be, looks like it's gonna have to be made if they keep traveling down this path of building this thing.
So are we not gonna have a say-so where the parking garage goes? I mean, is that just gonna be...
To me, if we're going to participate in paying for it, we are, but if we're not... Huh?
Where are we looking?
Well, they are firm on wanting it in that location.
Say that location again.
Behind...
Okay, the buildings on the...
The library?
Think, think of, yeah, sort of behind the library, between, um, Main and Water, those buildings that form that corner behind them.
But not only that, it comes over from the library, all the way over behind the buildings, is a private parking lot now. It comes all the way over behind that, which, which is added, it actually touches the downtown.
It, it's, Ms. Love, it, it, I think it's really a good layout and a design and a good concept, but going through the, um, the building pains, the growing pains, I think is what'll be difficult.
Yeah, and I think if we had it first, it would help alleviate a lot of those pains, but not getting it till after the completion of the justice center would be very detrimental to our gall...
And the only reason I asked you to bring it up t- tonight is because y'all are probably gonna be getting some calls from different people, for some county commissioners, other folks, and I just encourage you to understand that Mr. Fennell and Mr., and, and the mayor are in discussions with them, and I think we all need to stay on the same page. And they're not gonna commit us to anything without us knowing it, but...
No.
If you get calls from them, I just ask you to, to refer back to those two, because they're actually on the committee that's discussing, so.
Well, I, since you brought that out, I just left a JPA meeting, and, and I can tell you that they're gonna start reaching out to every council member and wanting to talk with you guys, and explain what they're wanting to do, and, you know, what, whatever help we could give them.
Well, they're saying three to four years to build it?
Well, and, and the timeline that they announced last night was much sooner than I anticipated. It's, um, has them beginning construction early next year and completing it at the end of twenty-three?
Twenty-two.
End of twenty-two, beginning of twenty-three.
Right.
But, you know, even tonight, they said the way it went through, the county commission, the vote, they're really gonna try to fast-track this thing.
Steve, this is a hundred million dollar, about, like, three to four years. No, but three to four years seems like a long time to me.
They're not even gonna start it, they're not even gonna start it until twenty, twenty?
They're gonna start next year, early next year.
Sometime next year.
And giving it a full three years, which would take it to the end of twenty-two, or beginning of twenty-three. It's, it's huge. I mean, it is, it is twelve courtrooms, multiple stories, three sets of elevators, underground parking.
They're actually gonna have a floor that they're gonna build out, but nobody's gonna be on it yet. It's gonna be for future expansion, but they're gonna be something over the top of that, so they're actually gonna build it out, but there, there'll be another floor that they'll actually be able to build out at later times.
I haven't seen a plan, I, I, I don't...
They don't have any plans yet.
They do now.
Cranes, that's a lot of inconvenience for a lot of people. Five, six stories, yeah. How, how many stories?
Five stories and, and a, and a garage under it.
Thirty, thirty, thirty thousand to forty thousand, uh, square foot per story. And as the stories go up, they, they go inward, kind of like a wedding cake. Uh, and, and a big atrium in the, the, a two-story atrium when you walk into it, and that's to, uh, where you go through the metal detector and the screen and that. Also, there's some alleyways that goes from the parking garage that'll be between the buildings to go to the front of the building, through security for the, uh, court system. One thing that I want to point out, they mentioned tonight on the parking garage that they're looking at like eighty-four spaces per floor for the parking garage, and the county says that they need, and back me up if I'm right, Paige, the county says they need four hundred parking spaces in that garage. That's just for them. That's just for them. Yeah, so I, that gives you an idea of the scale of this site.
It's huge. It is, it's huge. It's a huge building.
How many employees do they have in there?
Paige can answer.
How many floors, what?
The court system has...
Now, how many employees? They said last night that there was a hundred and something employees that have to have parking for.
And then they, how much per floor?
Four hundred.
Eighty-four per floor.
But not only that, Steve, whoever they displace, all these buildings down here, whoever they displace, they're gonna give them some parking on the bottom floor of it, because they're displacing all their parking.
So the city's gonna lose parking places.
Yes, sir. Well, wha- let me tell you something, it's nothing the city owns, okay? The parking, the more the parking spaces we lose would be First Baptist Church's parking lot beside the library. We don't own any of that.
If they let us use their parking.
From, from the side of the building, all the way back, and on the side is all First Baptist Church's building. We own none of that.
And then, of course, the library has public parking, which is owned by the county.
In the back.
And then there's private parking that belongs to the borough owners.
But as far as the stuff the city owns, we, we're not losing, I mean, none of that over there belongs to the city.
What's the estimate on the public? How many parking places will be available for them in this building?
Four, they want four hundred.
For the public?
For, for everybody, for the employees, public, and everybody, they want four hundred just, just for their facility. So if we're gonna participate, we'll have to add another hundred, a hundred and fifty, or two hundred parking spaces on top of that.
I see where Steve's coming from, he's saying, how's this gonna benefit us? Right?
Yeah.
I mean, if they're, if they're gonna use it all the time.
Well, we're gonna have to have parking far downtown.
That's right.
I mean, that, that's...
How's that gonna benefit, it looks like they're gonna be, I mean, they're gonna use more of it, so.
They, they're saying that, that when court's not in session, and we have events on the square like we, we do, then we're gonna have access to it, you know, all the time. Um, there's something else I need to say.
Steve, that's why if we're participating, we'll have to add a lot more parking spaces for us, for the city, and for the...
The city will have that.
Yes, sir. And that, that's why, but, but it's cheaper for us to go in cooperation with them than build a, a eight or ten million dollar parking garage of our own up here.
Or do we have a figure on what we're supposed to participate in?
No, we don't.
No, we don't.
But to give you an idea, the, the first, uh, um, estimates come out at seventeen, eighteen thousand dollars per parking spot.
They tell me twenty today.
Now it's twenty thousand dollars.
Per spot. Per spot.
Per spot. That's how you estimate a parking garage.
They think it's gonna cost them eight million dollars to build their four hundred spots.
That's what I've always been told.
Eight million dollars on their part.
The other thing that I'm concerned about aesthetically is, we don't want an eight-story parking garage right there. That's going, that's going, well, the courthouse is really, the scale of this courthouse is really going to shock you. But, um, the, uh, we don't want a parking garage that tall. I mean, we don't want a parking garage towering over downtown.
One thing that they, and Paige can back me up on this, one thing that they fought for, they really wanted this first site, uh, that they're gonna use, that they come in agreement with the church on, is because the, the, uh, the, uh, ground goes downhill, so a lot of this will actually be down, kinda underground, and it wouldn't be like on a flat level, go up higher, but like Paige said, that will be an awfully tall building.
It's still gonna be, it's gonna be the tallest building there.
One thing I did suggest this evening is, I know I'm planning, we have, uh, we do traffic studies and stuff like that. Well, we're all guessing about parking spots that we need and parking spots that they need. And I suggested, I, I would almost say something to Nick Tuttle or Bill McCord, is there companies out there that could be hired that could access our parking that we need in the city and the parking that the county needs? Because right now, see, it seems like we're all guessing at that.
I think they've done some of that. They've done that, so. Mr. Tuttle will jump in here. It was before me.
I guess. No, not when we, we, we actually solicited engineers.
Oh, when we got to figure out how many spots actually is in downtown.
And it was about a, about a year and a half ago, I believe, and actually had selected a firm, uh, to do a study for us, but because of all the justice center discussion, we put that on hold. Um, and so we never entered into that, um, that study of, of assessing what our parking needs are now. Um, and trying to determine whether or not, you know, a garage would be the right thing to do and where that garage would go. So there are companies out there that can help us with that, but we haven't moved forward with it.
One thing I'd like to say, uh, two years ago, when I started serving on this committee, I traveled to Murfreesboro to look at their court system that they just built. And then it kinda made me aware of how the mechanics of this goes, but I, I would feel, I, I'm almost positive that you're gonna have county commissioners reach out, or this JPA committee, reach out to each council person and want to offer to send you on a field trip to Murfreesboro and look how their court systems go. I know that's come out in the open, so look forward to that.
I'd suggest we look at more than one.
Well, the county's already hired these people.
Yeah, JPA's the one that built the one in Murfreesboro.
And they built the Birch Building in Nashville.
Right.
If you've ever been there. Birch Building where the courts in Nashville.
And their parking garage and stuff they have there. These folks done that one, so.
Well, I really don't, I don't. Want a tall, unpleasant-looking building downtown, but, um, it, down in that, that area down there, I'm just wondering how many people that want to come shop on the square are gonna park that far? They don't.
Well, I don't think that garage is a bad location. Um, I think it's pretty accessible to the square.
But how many people park there now? They drive around the square and they don't see a parking place and they say, oh, there's no parking.
Well, those parking places will still exist, so, I mean, if they're not.
But they're already saying there's no parking for those.
Well, no, but I'm, we can't put a parking garage in the middle of the square, I mean.
No, but where would you have put it?
Where would you have put it before the county came up with that spot?
I like the City Hall parking lot. And I suggested they partner with us and build the one here, because, I mean, face it, people don't have a choice of whether to go to court. They do have a choice of whether to go shop, so.
But it, once, once you visualize and see their plan, you'll understand why that is a good location for it. And it is real convenient to the downtown, but you just have to see the whole plan, the overall plan, and you'll understand it more. They've done a fantastic job with their plan. They're professionals. They do it all over the country, as they said. So once you see the total plan, you'll understand.
One thing they, one thing they brought up tonight, and they discussed heavily, was security of our court systems. And I think that is the catalyst for them wanting, one of the main catalysts for them wanting to build this, uh, new court system. Uh, they gave statistics this evening on, uh, lawyers that have entered the court systems and shot the judges. Just people coming in with weapons and guns all across the country and doing stuff like that, because one of the attorneys mentioned this evening that he didn't, he's rushing the court and he didn't really think that he should go through the metal detectors and stuff like everybody else does when that's his livelihood and he's entering that building every single day. And they said, no, it'd be just like Murfreesboro, Nashville, you'll have to go through the metal detector. Even if you go to lunch and come back in, you'll still have to go through there. And then they gave statistics of lawyers that's actually come back into the court systems and.
If they could do that now with the, the, what they have, I mean, people do.
But anyway, that's for another day. I just want to tell you, they're probably gonna contact you.
They could, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
So everybody just needs to be on the same page and understand that we do have two representatives that's trying to negotiate and talk to them for us.
And I think Smith Street's gonna be an issue for us too, before.
They mentioned that they would like to, for us to widen the street, Smith Street, so. Yeah. But.
Anyone else? Okay, let's go to public recognition on non-agenda-related items. If you're here tonight and you'd like to speak to something that's on on the agenda, this would be your time. Come forward and do so. Introduce yourself and give us your address, please.
Good evening, Pascal Gervais, Long Island Park, you know where I live now. Couple of things. One, I want to thank you for voting against putting out this light ticket thing. Like the chief say, I think it's a safety issue. I worked in safety in aviation. It's kinda the same than road on bigger. Uh, all my life, and I think, you know, money is not an option. If the system save one life, it's enough. Even if we, the city lose fifty thousand dollars a year and one life gets saved, because there is a system which is gonna prevent people to do the wrong thing, it's worth it. Generally, the people who are complaining are the people who get tickets. They broke the law, they get tickets, they're not happy. If somebody gets a ticket and say, I'm not gonna come back to Gallatin, great. You don't deserve to be in our street if you don't, you know, that's, that's what I think. Thank you, chief. Second thing, we're gonna talk about noise ordinance again. Uh, last Sunday, I am digging noise. Um, you know, the noise come from far now because we don't have trees anymore. And I'm driving and that's come from Liberty Creek. Sunday morning, eight thirty, something there, uh, they digging dirt, um, dump truck coming in and out. So I'm a good citizen. I stopped, find a foreman, and I say, you know, there is a city ordinance about noise that you can't work on Sunday, make noise. And he put me on the phone with his boss, and his, his boss asked him the same, same question. You know you can get a fine? Yes, I do. That was surprising. So Chuck gave me his cell number. He should never have done that. So I called Chuck on Sunday morning. Hey Chuck, that's what's happening. Chuck called PD. I'm sure PD took care of it because they stopped working. But maybe we should raise the fine, because these companies, depending how much the fine is, they don't care. If they're gonna run out of time with all the weather we had and they're on the time contract, they're gonna lose more money running out of time than paying a fine. So maybe the fine should be bigger.
Yep. You're limited on what you can do on the municipal fine.
But.
Can you shut them down, Chuck?
Thank you, chief, again, twice. So, but, uh, I, I have the. Name again, video, so I can give it to you. If you want to track them down and make some money, yeah.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak under public recognition on non-agenda-related items, now would be your time to come forward. And I don't see anyone jumping up indicating that they wish to. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. Second by Councilwoman Love, all in favor, say aye. Post, everybody, we are adjourned. Have a lovely evening. We look forward to seeing you next week.